In progress.
Good evening, welcome to the June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Planning Commission. Call to order, take the roll call please.
Commissioner Haveman.
Here.
Commissioner Rodby.
Here.
Commissioner Sade.
Here.
Commissioner Summers.
Here.
Chair Mercado.
Present. Okay, now the order of the agenda, are there any commissioners that would like to request changes to the order of the agenda? Don't see any, great. Next we'll move to the meeting procedures, City of San Rafael remains committed for all to participate in our public meetings. Want to welcome all that are making the time this evening to participate. Margaret, if you could please tell the public how public comment works tonight.
Thank you Chair Mercado, tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live through YouTube. Viewers can also watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda or by dialing six six nine four 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 nine one seven one and entering in the meeting ID eight three six five one zero four nine zero three four pound. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable that feature. And if you experience any technical difficulties, please email me at margaret dot Kavanaugh hyphen Lynch at city of San Rafael dot org. In order to provide oral testimony, speakers must be present. Display it on the podium as a timer to help you stay within the allotted timeframe. You are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if you live outside the city. If you'd like to request an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act to provide public comment virtually, please submit your request to me at the Planning Manager's Office seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting. Again, at margaret dot Kavanaugh hyphen Lynch at city of San Rafael dot org for consideration.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll move to oral communications from the public. These are for remarks, non-agenda items are welcome at this time, they can be anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Please know that remarks on the agenda items will be heard at the time when the item is discussed. So these are for items that are not tonight, which will be the Miraflores Avenue, this is for anything else.
Can you speak into this?
Yeah, if you could into the mic, yeah.
Um, so my name is Penny Rossini and I am a longtime resident of Santa fell. And I I'm coming to your commission meeting. And perhaps you're not the, 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 the body that I need to address. I did forward an email to several city of Santa fell. Uh, I don't know if we call them employees or. But I guess I could read, I I guess I'm not the only one who's very concerned about the level of development that's happening in Santa fell and in the way that it's happening. And so if it's all right, I'll read my, my email that I sent, sorry to be so nervous. I'm writing as a concerned longtime resident of Santa fell and I'll cut to the chase. What is going on with all of these monstrous buildings? And why even have project submittals if there are no parameters on height, parking or environmental impact? Or the ability of any of us, any of us to simply say no. I said, there needs to be a balance between growth and insanity. As I see it, and I am not alone, because I I talked to a lot of my neighbors, other, other parents, other families. The traffic is only going to get much, much worse. It shouldn't take thirty minutes to drive from Bristol Park to San Rafael High School ever. And yet that already happens and we will be stuck frighteningly stuck if there is a fire and we all need to flee. As it stands, all it takes is one tiny hiccup on second or third or a stalled car on the Richmond Bridge. And we are all down to a crawl or a complete stop. Biking is not an, an option for many of us and despite a lot of work, a lot of really good work on various downtown streets, biking around town is a risky proposition. Our streets cannot be made wider, our freeway cannot be made wider, the train runs through town. But where can it even take us on such a limited schedule? Any, my, my second point is any sense of community and identity here in Santa fell is going to be stomped on by massive generic architecture. People choose to live here because it's not a crowded city, they live here because it has history and character. They live here because they can look out and actually see hills from the sidewalks and the streets.
If you could, your time is up, if you could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I, can I?
Yeah, just try to wrap it up.
Okay.
Please.
I I'm fully supportive of more development and I, I want to house the unhoused, I want to solve that problem. But I don't think that the method of what's happening is, is going to be the answer. I understand that things change. And I think that a smart approach considers all viewpoints, including a lot of the homeowners who pay their fair share of taxes. I regularly choose to shop and eat local if I think it can support downtown businesses, I have rooted for Santa fell. But I fear that Santa fell is going to become unrecognizable for a lot of people, including its own planners. I grew up in Ronert Park and someone at some point apparently never thought to include a downtown in that city's plan, and it has had real consequences. And I think the type of building going on here now is going to have real consequences too, and not necessarily the good kind.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the comment.
Um, can I ask a couple of questions?
No, it's just public comments, if you submitted the emails, that's the best you can do. Since this is not an item on the agenda, we really don't discuss it or deliberate it tonight.
Okay, something as simple as how you guys are connected to the, the city council.
Yeah, what I would say is maybe submit an email to the staff team and they can walk you through the whole process of like the different committees and the commissions and you can kind of understand the maze of who to get through. So I would maybe coordinate with Margaret and send her the email.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, you're Margaret, okay, thank you Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public comment for items on the agenda? Okay, thank you again for coming up. So we'll move on now to consent calendar. Two items on the consent calendar this evening, draft planning commission minutes for May twenty seventh and June tenth. Do you have any edits or changes? And if not, then someone can make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve both minutes.
As Commissioner Haveman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Sadey in the last second, so go ahead. We'll take a roll call.
Yes Chair, Commissioner Haveman.
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Rodby.
Aye.
Commissioner Sade.
Aye.
Commissioner Summers.
Aye.
Chair Mercado.
Yes.
Well, motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we'll go to action items, so there's one action item this evening, it's for major environmental and design review permit with an exception to specified hillside development standards and a variance for a new attached elevated deck and detached parking deck with associated access pathways and landscaping located at thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue. If we're ready to go ahead, we'll take the staff report or if we need to take a minute.
Yes, thank you.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, good evening Commissioners, Renee Nickenig, associate planner, here today to discuss the project at thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue. The purpose of this hearing is to review a proposed project for a new detached parking deck at the front and side property lines and a new attached open deck at the rear of the residence, included in the project is also landscaping and accessways related to the two new decks. The two requested entitlements are a major environmental and design review with the, with the hillside exception as well as a variance. It is recommended that the Planning Commission convene a public hearing, discuss the staff report, testimony and ask questions of the staff and applicant as needed and adopt the resolution recommending to the city council approval of a major environmental and design review permit with an exception to specified hillside development standards and variants. And we do have the applicant and the owner here tonight as well. I'll briefly review the site and setting and the project, this address is thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue, it's in the Gerstel Park neighborhood. The property size is approximately five thousand square feet and has an average slope of a little over fifty-eight percent. This is a site plan of the proposed project, it did not include an existing site plan. Um, in this proposed site plan, you can see, uh, the, the primary residence, which is in the bottom right corner, is existing, that footprint is not changing. There is an existing detached deck and an existing front deck that will be demolished. These are the two new structures proposed, the, uh, excuse me, bottom left, which is the project. Northwest, a new parking deck, you'll see right abutting the property lines and then a detached rear deck as well. This is the elevation from the north interior side. An elevation of the rear. And this is the west elevation, which is the front, which would, what, how it will be seen from Miraflores Avenue, and I'll just, if you don't mind going back one. Um, what I didn't note in the setting was that this property sits between two streets as opposed to having another residence at the rear side, so from the view here, the, the top is Miraflores Avenue, the bottom, the bottom, bottom property line is Miramar Avenue. So the project is visible from a public right of way at both the front and the rear. And this would be the, the view from Miraflores. Uh, the project itself requires both a major environmental designer view and a hillside exception and a variance as it does not meet all of the development standards for both the R five zoning district, underlying zoning district and the hillside residential design guidelines. Um, I've included, I'm happy to go over these in more detail, um, there are more details in the staff report, this is minimized to have it on the screen, um, of the items that it is meeting and not meeting, so in, I'll, in the, there's two different pieces of the project, there's the detached parking deck and then the rear deck. The detached parking deck is going to have a zero, uh, front and side setback. The attached deck will meet the setbacks appropriately. Neither structure will be exceeding the overall height limit. The lot coverage will actually not be exceeded and the parking, the, the project will provide two additional parking spaces where now there are none designated for the property. For the hillside standards, there are, uh, four, three standards that the project will not meet, natural state being the first. The, per the code, eighty-three percent of the property would be required to be retained in its natural state, which for our definition is no development and no structures, but this project will only leave fifty-one percent of the natural state. The gross building square footage will be exceeded by, approx about, about fifteen feet, which is not much, but does still go over that maximum allowed for hillside properties. This property is within a hundred vertical feet of a ridge line, which per the code does not allow additional development. This is already a developed property, there's an existing residence there, it's approximately a hundred years old, I believe more. The new development proposed does not increase, does not, um, excuse me, further obstruct the view of the, to or from the ridge line the way that the items are situated. And this, uh, the property currently does not have parking, uh, but I did want to also note that in the hillside development standards, actually four parking spaces would be required for the street, would it, if it were to be a new residence, non-existent, and this project will provide two. So the, uh, the planning commission has following options, adopt the resolution recommending approval to the city council, adopt the resolution with modifications, changes or additional conditions of approval, continue the application to the, allow the applicant to address any of the commission's comments or concerns, or deny the proposed project and direct staff to return with a revised resolution of denial. I'm, that was a brief overview, so I'm happy to answer any additional questions, we also have the applicant, uh, slash architect and the owner here tonight to speak on the project.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll bring it back. Anybody have any questions for the staff team? Not yet. Okay. Okay, so we will then open this up and for the public hearing component, so if the applicant team wishes to come on up and provide anything, right now's your chance.
Thank you Renee for the introduction and the detailed information and good evening Commissioners. My name is Yu Juno from Spacecraft Architect and I'm pleased to be here as the architect for the proposed project. I'm here to walk you through why we consider the construction of two car parking deck and an elevated rear deck. And site landscaping improvements in the way we proposed.
Yeah, wait, there goes.
So this is the, um, this is the thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue, there's a, a roadway and it's uphill towards the ridge here. Next. This property thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue unfortunately has been neglected for decades. This led to unsafe and unhealthy living conditions, degrading the overall quality of the streetscape. We've actually already started an interior renovation to make the home more habitable under building permit B two two one two dash one two nine. Our current interior renovation is addressing the existing house's habitability. However, during the process, we identified three critical site specific issues that our proposed additions aim to resolve. So lack of street parking, unusable and unsafe outdoor space, erosion risks and lack of vegetation on a steep site was, were the three key issues that we would like to resolve to aim enhancing safety, usability and neighborhood harmony. Next one please. The first and perhaps most significant issue is the chronic traffic congestion and safety concerns on Miraflores Avenue. Next. As many of you know, Miraflores Avenue is a very narrow fifteen foot wide street. This limited width combined with a lack of on-site parking at thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue creates significant headaches for residents and can even impact emergency vehicle access. As you can see, this is the project, uh, property. There is no on-site parking, so street parking has to be used and this street is Miraflores Avenue, that's only fifteen foot wide. San Rafael Municipal Code fourteen twelve zero three zero F actually requires two on-site parking spaces for single-family residences on streets less than twenty-six feet wide. Currently, thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue has no designated off-street parking and the street is only fifteen foot wide. This means cars often end up parked on the street, making the street even tighter, unsafe, especially given our neighborhood's steep terrain and presence of families, including elderly and children. We've observed that on-site parking solution, next please, whether docks or garages are prevalent on Miraflores Avenue. Next please. Currently thirty-eight Miraflores is the only home on the block without off-street parking, forcing residents and visitors to congest the narrow roadway. This is both unsafe and unsustainable, especially for families with children, elderly residents and even for emergency access for fire truck, truck and so on. Our neighbors, as shown in these photos, have successfully implemented similar structures. This demonstrates, um, the existing neighboring, uh, parking structure that we can observe from the street Miraflores Avenue. Next please. We've actually, uh, therefore, our proposal includes a new two-car detached parking deck at the front of the property. This is the existing site plan that Renee explained, uh, uh, existing house stays at the same, same footprint. And then we are just proposing replacing these two decks that are not in use at the moment with a, a more useful and safe decks. And we've carefully chosen the northwest corner, which is here, of the site for the parking deck, proposing zero setback on the front yard in order to minimize impact on the existing site. We have explored many ideas, but the northwest corner is the only feasible location. As you can see in this existing site plan, the existing house and the entrance stair already occupy the frontage of the property at Miraflores Avenue. Next please. The steep terrain access, uh, makes access from Miramar Avenue, this is Miramar Avenue and then steep hill and then it leads, leads to the Miraflores Avenue. So this steep terrain makes access from Miramar Avenue unviable and it would require twenty-foot high retaining wall like this red highlight shows. Therefore, it is the only feasible location that minimizes impact on the existing natural grade and avoids extensive disruptive grading and the construction of almost a twenty-foot high retaining wall. Next please. This isn't just about convenience or a nice to have, it's a critical safety enhancement that has been widely adopted as solutions for this community, having this parking space on site. We are also asking for zero setback on the side yard in order to accommodate the minimum code size eighteen foot by nineteen foot two-car parking deck. Next please. While a one-car parking deck would comply with a three-foot side yard setback, it would simply not be sufficient for the typical needs of a family in a four-bedroom house of this size, especially given the challenges of a steep hillside location where reliable vehicle access is very difficult. This two-car capacity is essential to accommodate the needs of a family residing in a hillside home. And two spaces are also required by code, as I mentioned earlier, fourteen twelve zero three zero F. Furthermore, this approach is ubiquitous in the neighborhood as I shared the photos of the neighborhood, as evidenced by many existing parking structures with zero setbacks along the Miraflores Avenue. Next please. Even though we try to minimize the footprint to accommodate the, uh, eighteen by nineteen foot, uh, minimum code required the size for two-car parking deck, due to the irregular shape of our site, this proposed parking deck is about fifteen square foot beyond the maximum code allowed gross square foot buildup on the site. This slight increase is a direct result of the site's unique geometry that is highlighted this orange area, optimizing the available space for safe and efficient code compliant parking. Next please. Therefore, we respectfully ask for approval of conversion of this frontage of thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue from this condition. Next please. To this proposed condition with the parking deck. Next, uh, you can stay, sorry. Go back please.
Hold on.
Yeah, sorry. The park, the parking deck itself is designed to be open to the air above, no cover roof or no enclosed walls to really minimize its visual impact on the street. And even although for beautiful landscaping underneath by elevating the deck with piers to improve the site itself. For set, for fire safety, the side of right next to our neighbor's fence will have one-hour rated firewall along the, uh, right behind the neighboring fence. Next please. The second major issue is the severe lack of safe and usable outdoor space at thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue. In a COVID world, uh, a post-COVID world, we all know access to outdoor space is essential for health and well-being. The property's rear yard is extremely steep, given the steep slope of the rear yard, there is no usable outdoor area. The existing front and side decks are dilapidated and pose significant safety hazards due to rotten materials and unstable guardrails. And their remote location with poor connection to the house makes them impractical for daily use. In contrast, elevated decks are defining characteristics of this hillside neighborhood as you can see these photos, providing essential outdoor living spaces while respecting the natural topography. These photos here demonstrates how pervasive and successful these elevated decks are in providing functional outdoor areas within a steep hillside context in this community. Next please. This also shows the other, um, neighborhoods elevated deck looking up to the reach from the Miramar Avenue. Next please. Our proposed elevated deck accessible from the second floor living space directly address this need. Updating, improving the view when you see the property from the Miramar Avenue towards the ridge line. Next please. It's designed to minimize site impact by being elevated on piers, preserving the existing grade and providing a safe, functional and integrated outdoor space that aligns with the neighborhood's character. Next please. This is the, uh, living area that you can directly access to the rear deck that we are proposing. Next please. That's a, uh, same elevation that Renee shared, how this will be elevated to minimize impact on the site. Next please. Finally, the property currently suffers from a lack of vegetation. Finally, the property currently suffers from a lack of vegetation, as you saw in the backyard photo, making it inconsistent with the natural beauty of the surrounding hillside. Next, please. And raising concerns about soil erosion and potential landslides, especially with increasing heavy rain events nowadays. Next, please. Our proposed landscaping plan, along with a stormwater management plan, introduces drought-tolerant and fire-resistant plans throughout the site, enhancing soil stability, aiding in stormwater control, and improving the aesthetic appeal. The elevated purpose structures described above also avoid grading and maximize permeable surface on the site. Next, please. Tall trees along Miramar Avenue will also preserve the ridge line views and minimize the visible impact of the new structures, making the property a harmonious part of the natural setting. Okay, move to our. Next one. One previous one? Thirty page. Yeah.
There's a lot.
Yeah. So, this is the current view that, that when you approach the property from Miramar Avenue from south and then right at the property down at the Miramar Avenue and from the north. And we are expecting the view will be a lot more harmonious with the community, and it will help the ridge line view to be improved. Then go back to twenty-seven, please. In conclusion, the Rameon Residence Project at thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue is a necessary intervention to address longstanding safety, functionality, and neighborhood compatibility issues that have impacted this property and the street for decades. It's just more than, it's more than just an aesthetic upgrade. The proposed parking deck is crucial for elevating traffic congestion and ensuring emergency vehicle access on Miraflores Avenue, while the elevated rear deck provides essential safe and usable outdoor space on a challenging hillside. Both additions, coupled with our proposed landscaping and stormwater management plan, are designed with minimal site impact, sensitivity to the natural environment and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. We have diligently worked to ensure our design meets the objectives of the Hillside Design Guidelines, General Plan two zero four zero, and improves public health and safety. Next, please. We also communicated, these are the landscape vegetation type we are proposing. Next, please. We also communicated with our neighbor to ensure our neighbors feel comfortable with our approach. Please refer to a letter of support from our neighbor at forty-four Miraflores Avenue, who recognizes the community benefits of this project. Twenty-six, the site plan? Thank you. The site plan? Thank you. We respectfully request, we respectfully request the Planning Commissioner's approval for this vital project allowing us to transform thirty-eight Miraflores Avenue into a safe, functional, and harmonious home for its residents and a positive addition to this cherished neighborhood. Thank you. We are happy to answer any questions you may.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, maybe before you go, I'll bring it back to the commissioners if there's any questions for the applicant team. We'll start on the side. Yes, go ahead.
I just had one question. I see that your neighbors are supporting the parking structure, and rightfully so. But the retaining wall that one of your neighbors brought up as an issue, can you address that?
The, I didn't include a photo here. That is existing retaining walls that's parallel to the house that we don't plan to touch other than repair as needed during construction if we see any hazard. But those are actually not part of our proposal.
Okay.
But we will certainly repair if needed.
Has that been looked at in terms of stability? I think that's what your neighbor was concerned about.
It's been there for decades, like, so we didn't specifically bring.
So, I'm Jason, Romell, the owner. So, when we look at the wall, it's, it's a little, not, it's not perfectly straight as it's a hundred years old. As you can see, we park on the street, and it's holding my big truck and other vehicles already. By taking the cars off the street, it'll allow less weight to be on, on the wall. If there is any cracks of that nature, we plan to epoxy inject it to help strengthen the wall. The fence retaining wall, as you see, it's still holding. And we plan to, if, if it needs to place piers right, you know, setting to support the existing piers.
So, that retaining wall is right here, like, parallel to the Miraflores Avenue? And then being this the higher spot sloping down towards Miramar Avenue, if this retaining fails, his house will fail.
And it's, it's not in your, it's in the right-of-way, correct? It's, so is it the city responsible for that?
It's inside the property.
I, yeah, I can speak to it a little bit.
Okay.
So, it is, it is within the property line.
Oh, it didn't, okay. It's hard to tell on the site plan. Yeah.
It is within, it is within the property line. It is not included as a major part, as a part of the project. There was a geotechnical study for the project that did not call out this wall for any reasons, any hazards to prepare.
Okay, thank you.
Further, if this, if the wall is, if work starts to happen on that wall, we will bring that to the attention of the building staff, and we'll get a permit for it at that time.
And it appears that you're landscaping now in that area above the wall versus cars parking there? So, you're going to take load off of it, as you suggested?
Can you then clarify on the site plan? Because it looks like on the site plan that a majority of it exists outside the property line. I'm looking on like A one point one. And there's a note.
What do you mean show us on the survey?
Thirteen, which shows wall repair where needed. And it looks like Public Works already reviewed it, so.
We're pulling up the site plan for you right now. Although it's very hard to see on screen.
Oh, there's a phone. We could zoom in. It is on the staff report, it's page fifty-one, or forty-one out of fifty, so it's A one point one. May be able to zoom in on that one. There's these two waves, and not the wall. If you go back to the photo, I think those two lines are the ones. That's how I wrote it.
Apologies, one moment.
Commissioner Sade, is this illustrating what you want to see, or is there something different we should pull up?
I think that's cutting off the actual.
So, if you go further.
It's, yeah, or even if you look at the.
Maybe this note thirteen is what the commissioner is referring to?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, these.
Yeah, so is that that wall then?
I think the photo he took is this one inside.
Oh, I thought there were two lines, so if you look at the photo, there's, there's three, right? So, there's.
Yeah, there's like one here.
There's one against the house, there's one in the middle, and then there's one in the back. And it looks like thirteen is the one in the back, but.
The thirteen is the existing fence that we'll definitely need.
Okay.
To make it look good. And because of the elevation difference, there's an existing retaining wall that's supporting the fence below. So, Jason will definitely take a look and repair as needed.
And is the new fence going to have the same footprint as the old fence, or get moved out?
Yeah. No, exactly. We don't plan to touch the fence footprint nor the stair.
So, there will still be space for cars to park on the other side of fence, though. It won't be your intention anymore, but.
Well, he's been parking, so he's been parking here outside the fence. So, he's been mentioning, I guess, the, he's been referring, if the load is like transferring to the ground, that will stress the retaining wall towards that, that side.
Yep.
So, that's what I think he's referring to. So, yes, like, no more additional stress onto the retaining wall.
Right, except when a neighbor has a party and somebody wants to park there.
Great.
Then maybe.
It will still be accessible as parking. That was what I'm.
Oh, I see. Maybe we can plant.
Did your question get addressed for now?
I, I don't think, I still think looking at the, looking at the survey, you can see those piers. But I guess if Public Works has looked at it and they're okay with it, then I think, and as long as.
Survey indicates that it's off the property, not on their property. It looks like it's in the right-of-way. So, if it's in the right-of-way, you know, maybe it's something the city should take a look at, because it's part of their road, really. So, just, I get exactly what she's saying. The survey, everything to me is that she's correct. It indicates that it's actually not on the property, that particular fence, in this, this post. And we, it's not that important.
Yeah, yeah, the fence is.
It was a good question, though.
Through the chair, if the commission wanted to add a condition of approval, if you so choose to recommend the project, a condition could request staff to refer project back to Public Works to inspect wall, if it, see if it's on the right-of-way, one, and if it is, if there's anything they'd like to see done with the wall. Basically, if it's our property, there's another discussion.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's all we'd want to see, is like, Public Works just taking a second look. And if they're responsible for it, maybe they do some work to it. Yeah.
Or they would be in touch with the property owner regarding.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that is the wall identified as footnote thirteen on the survey? Okay.
It's just, you can't really see it well from the photo, but it is. If you look on the, if you look on the survey, you'll see the piers outside.
Good question. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you so much for presenting.
Thank you for your time.
We'll bring it back and. All right, we'll open it for public comment for a rowdy crowd tonight of a lot of people. Officially open public comment and close. Great, so we'll bring it back to the planning commission. We can deliberate. We had some questions and some initial ideas. And I'll start. I'll kind of open it up if anybody wants to start with their comment or idea.
I'll just start real quick. I think it's a good project. It's solving the problems you've addressed. I think that I'm in full support of the exceptions and the variances to push to council. It's a small lot. It's on one of these really bad hillsides. I've worked up there before. It's really kind of draconian to expect someone to meet the natural state requirements and the hillside ordinance in this case. And I think it's the poster child, frankly, for an exception, especially for the parking, and that's a pretty modest deck you're putting out there on a site that has no outdoor living. So, I think they're both a win, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just second what Stuart mentioned, and it'll be good to add the condition to, so Public Works can just take a look at it before it goes to city council.
Thank you. Other thoughts?
I'll just echo it, and good for you for taking on the project and improving the site.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I think good presentation as well. You identified the public, you know, sort of the benefits of it against sort of what the constraints of our code requires. And I think Commissioner Summers raised a good point, right, which is there's this sort of old requirement of a natural state that's really hard to meet when it seems like the benefits outweigh that, so I thought that was done very well. You elevated that with the consistency of the neighborhood, which I think really helps in the variance analysis is being made, so. Yeah, same. I think this is a step in the right direction, so. If anybody would like to make a motion, making sure we clarify any additional conditional, condition language, I think right now is the time. But maybe before we do, I'll just double-check with staff. Is there any questions or items before we make a motion?
No, Mr. Chair. We're waiting for the motion, and we are anticipating an added condition from the dais this evening.
Okay. Okay, so if anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the project per the conditions in the staff report. And with an added condition to have Public Works review that retaining wall and what portions of it are in the right-of-way, and if it does need to be worked on to coordinate with the owner.
Good. Have a motion. Second?
Commissioner Haveman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All right, motion and a second. We'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Radby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Aye.
Commissioner Summers?
Yes.
Chair Mercado?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you again for coming out.
Can I just say one thing? Before we acquired the property, it was, you know, exonerated, you know, and neighbors were like, there were squatters and things like that, didn't pay the banks and stuff, and they were so happy that we come to uplift the property itself and want to say thank you, because this will help the neighborhood as well.
Great, yeah, thanks again. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll close that item out. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on. So, now we'll move on to director's report.
Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch, Planning Manager. Nice to see you all this evening. I do want to let you know, and the public as well, that there is no meeting on July eighth. There is no items that are ripe for commission consideration. And it's a Fourth of July week, so I'm glad to be able to give your evening back to you. I don't have anything slated for the second meeting in July yet, but it's too soon to say that for sure. I would anticipate that we will be meeting on the regular meetings for the planning commission for the, for the coming few months, except July eighth. This concludes the report.
Actually, real quick, knowing that you're having some quorum issues, what are the dates on, I shot out that I wouldn't be available on certain dates on August. I just didn't know if that conflicted with our regular meeting dates or not.
It actually, we can do this offline, but there was one meeting that you would be in conflict. And with notice, we can happily excuse that.
Okay.
Absence. I also, oh, actually, I should say that the city council did appoint a new planning commission member last night. I'm awaiting the details, and I can't wait to take them to lunch. But there was, another person has been brought onto the commission, and we'll be joining you when we meet next.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I have a quick question? What date was the meeting for the, that lists all the planning commission dates? It was in January, right?
Yes, and our meetings are also, if you go to the
Oh, they're all.
Planning Commission website, it's on there. But just to answer really quickly, July twenty-second, which is the one that we believe Commissioner Summers will be gone for, and then August twelfth, and then August twenty-sixth, which we also believe Commissioner Summers has alerted us.
I can probably be here the twenty-second of July.
Okay.
Definitely the twenty-sixth I cannot be, so.
Yeah, I have no problem with any of those dates.
Excellent. And again, if we don't have items that are ripe for consideration or a policy document ready to go, I will not bring the meeting. You will get a cancel. or a policy document ready to go, I will not bring the meeting. You will get a cancellation.
I, I will not be able to be here on the twenty-second.
Okay, we'll figure it out. Thank you. All right, Commission Communications, any juicy gossip? Nothing in report? Okay. Thank you, staff. I know the quorum issue's been challenging, so thank you for being so patient and accommodating us. I'm glad we have somebody new joining on. All right, with that, I'll join the meeting. Thanks.